What is, what, it's not time yet?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You said it's five fifty. Oh, my clocks are six. That clock is not right. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the city council meeting for May fifth, two thousand twenty-five work session to order. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dixon, Dawn Dixon, Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Lester, Mayor Protem Messick, Councilmember Miller, Councilmember, Councilmember Alfred Dixon. We have a call.
Thank you so much. Counsel, before we adopt the agenda, we usually don't have our invocation, but I want to take a moment just of silence as we think of Tracy and her family. I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, Tracy Messick, having some, some things going on with her family, so we can just lift her up in prayer silently for a few seconds, please, before we adopt our agenda. Thank you, counsel. At this time, there's an agenda before us. Is there any modifications to the agenda?
Uh, Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to add to the agenda discussion of the sanitation policy.
So that would be item J under new business, no, item K. Any other additions? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda with said changes.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, did you add Councilwoman Miller to attendance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, do we have any public comments, Ms. Worthing- Wetherton? Oh, you do. Pat Sebohan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, Pat Sebohan here, Church Street, City of Jonesboro. Not that I need this, but, uh, I'm here to speak on the new sanitation policy that we received. A number of, uh, our constituents did not receive one on their trash cans because I've spoken with them. And the first question that I actually have is regarding policy. Counsel usually makes policy and not our independent departments. Uh, a number of the things that are on this new policy have actually been in place for some time, whether or not they have been supported by the members of the community. They have also been a part of this. The other thing I have concerns about, first of all, the council wasn't aware. I have spoken with Councilman A. Dixon. I had to leave a message for D. Dixon. I spoke with Mr. Powell. I spoke with Mr. Lester. I left a message for Ms. Miller. I did not bother Ms. Messick for obvious reasons. And then they were not aware of this being put on the trash cans. So I have a question about that as to why our council, who is gonna be receiving phone calls from constituents as to why this was not listed as part of their knowledge of what was going on in the city. The other question I have, actually a few, are elderly and disabled, do they still receive backdoor pickup? That has been a policy, policy being the big word for the City of Jonesboro for a long time. So I didn't know if there was still that registry as to whether they registered, so theirs would be picked up at their door, or if this new change that we received is going to dictate whether or not it is. The six a.m. request on that, to have your can down by the street, I think we're all grown-up folks, and if your can's not there when they come by, then it doesn't get picked up. So I don't understand why that's in there. Bundling limbs, we've always had a specific size. We used to joke about it when Mr. Nettleton and Brandon were here. It was the size of a washing machine. That's as much as you could have on the street for it to be picked up. For it to have to be bundled with specific designated ties is a concern. What happened to our chipper shredder trucks? What happened to it? What happened to our leaf and limb, which is part of what we pay every year as members of this community? What happened to our leaf vacuum? We used to have to just get our leaves to the edge of the road. I'm sorry.
That's three minutes.
Okay, but anyway, uh,
If you put them all in writing, I'll have a chance to address them. I couldn't take all the notes, but if you put them in writing, I know you-
I would be more than happy to do that. All right, thank you. I appreciate you guys.
If you would direct it to me, that'd be great. Jessica Sullivan.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, my name is Jessica Sullivan and, um, I am wanting to open a phlebotomy and EKG school in Jonesboro. Um, I've been a phlebotomist for fifteen years and a medical assistant, but I end up loving phlebotomy a lot more, so I really wanna teach people and show them, you know, the right way to do it and how to be gentle with people. And it's, uh, just been a passion of mine to show others and help others. And I feel like I would bring a lot to the community as well.
Thank you so much. At this time, we have a presentation to proclamation recognizing the fifty-sixth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, which is May fourth through May tenth. Clerk, would you like to come down?
Yes.
And we'll be acknowledging them and showing our appreciation someday this week.
Our Assistant Clerk is on vacation this week. Fifty-sixth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week is May fourth through the tenth, whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, um, a time, honor, and vital part of our local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public service, whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between citizens and local government, inviting agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have players to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as an information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs with all sorts of professional municipal clerk through their participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state provision, provincial county, and international professional organization, whereas it is most appreciated, we recognize our very own interim. This is a great job at our interim. Uh, our interim, some of us, uh, Assistant Clerk, Shannon Drew, and Assistant City Clerk, Pat Danny, for all of their accomplishments at the City of Jonesboro, now therefore be at your claim to our Danielle Star Marissa of Jonesboro, and our close to the city council, do hereby recognize that we can make four through the tenth, two thousand twenty-five, as professional municipal clerks speak. And we would extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks, Ms. Drew, and Ms. Daniel, to all the professional municipal clerks for their vital services. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, would you like to start calling our new business items, please?
New business letter, letter A, Council to discuss conditional use permit application number twenty-five CUP zero-zero-two per section two point three oh-seven by applicant Jessica Sullivan to register a business for a professional training school of phle- phlebotomy, an EKG certification program in the C-two Highway Commercial District. The property is located at one-one-eight North Avenue, Suite J, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six. The public hearing will be held on May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you so much, counsel. We have agenda item summary. Ms. Cameron, would you like to add anything to that? I see you recommend, recommend for approval. With two conditions.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to, the, the council, city council, to consider the recommendation that I provided. Um, I, I believe it's a, it's a, it's a great candidate. I looked at the, um, the requirements. The only recommendation that I would strongly recommend is number one, to provide a letter from the Clayton County Board of, of Health supporting the training school and certification program.
Is that customary, or are we just asking for it?
It's, it's just, we're just asking them forward.
Okay.
Just having a conversation with, um, someone at the Board of Health.
Does the Board of Health oversee that particular certification, or if they're not a state agency, she might, they may not render that?
That, they do not. They do not. But they were asking me questions, um, about it, and then I said that I can send the applicant by there, and, and the applicant can further explain to the, um, uh, to the, to the person in charge about the program.
But I'm saying, does the Clayton County Board of Health oversee such training schools and certificates? So they're not required to provide a-
They're not requi- no, ma'am. She's not required.
Okay. Counsel, we could definitely ask that. My only stipulation is for some reason the Clayton County Board of Health has some stipulation or some governance where they don't render that particular level for a business. I don't wanna leave her at a disadvantage.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we, we, so we can, we can say, we can say and/or, I mean, you know, you can make the-
That's my only concern. Sometimes Board of Health will not write for something that's not up under their purview.
That's true.
And then later on, there's a lot, you see what I'm saying? So I don't want it to, you know, if it was the department that licensed her-
Right.
Then, so.
Okay.
So I would ask for approval, counsel, by striking that. That's just a, a hard stipulation, 'cause I know how Board of Health's work.
Gotcha. Okay.
But thank you. I know, I know what you were trying to do, and I appreciate that. Counsel, any other questions?
Ms. Cameron, so you said that someone at the Clayton County Board of Health were asked, was asking you questions about the business, though? Yes, they were asking me questions about the person's, um, certification and where they got it from, and, and so I did tell them that that information was provided, and it would be in open records once the council will hear this, um, this application. But they began to ask me questions, and I said that I, I did tell them I would send a young lady by to, um, answer any questions that they would have. Because it is, it's not a, it's, there, it, it is a state regulation, but she has the certifications from those organizations.
I'm trying to see the connection, though, between the Board of Health and the operations, and her operations.
So, so the Board, so i- it's phlebotomy, it's blood, it's teaching, you know, it's teaching how to draw blood from individuals.
There's no license she can get from them. I'm, I'm trying to see the, the required connection between the Board of Health and a phlebotomy school.
Mm-hmm. So just, just the state Board of Health, when, um, when I, when I deal with the state board, I'll, I always go down to the local level just, just in case.
Okay, but their, their approval is not required. I just want us to be clear on that, that we're not stipulating addition, okay?
Absolutely. She has all the certifications that she needs to-
From the state?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, Mayor, I got a question. Uh, Ms. Cameron, uh, thank you for working with Ms. Jessica on bringing this to life. Just had a couple of questions in regards to what would a, a day look like on campus? Like, how many students would she be expecting to enroll?
So that's a great question, but the applicant would, would be able to answer that. We, we don't have a, we don't have a limitation on that, but, um, I have asked her for a floor plan. Once she submits, providing that is, this is approved, she will submit a floor plan when she submit, when she submit her application for a business license.
Gotcha. And granted, again, I, I think it's amazing. Um, since it's just also curious, like, you know, when it comes to the parking, right, 'cause I know it's shared parking space.
Absolutely.
Um, is there anything that needs to be put in place, or are we already in those, having those discussions?
So the location that she has chosen is, um, is, is pretty, um, applicable for a number of students. Um, she's in a, in a facility where she'll be, there is, is walkable, and then also there is, um, transportation. The only drawback that I've seen, and I will have to address this with the property owner, is that they have blocked off one of the entrance. I believe, um, I'm trying to think of north, and there's another street that, um-
I think that, uh, the one that connects Massengale Park, and we've spoken to Chief about even seeing if that is allowable.
Right.
And so we will work with them aside from this to open that up.
Absolutely.
He's talking about the one that comes, that street that's behind Massengale Park.
Right. That's exactly right. That's ingress and, and egress and ingress. I, I'm not-
But that has nothing to do with her.
Right.
Yeah, so we, we will, I saw that today, so we will talk to Chief about that period just for the entire building.
Uh, yeah, I believe that it's supposed to be open, because I went on Google Earth, and I went back years, and it was not blocked. It doesn't seem like our police department did that, so we will have to talk to the owners.
Okay.
Yeah, but he still, they can't do it from Earth yet.
And, and I understand why, because they're just trying to stop people from, you know, coming through the parking lot, because that could, that could be, uh, you know, that could be dangerous. I do understand why, but I believe once we get more, um, tenants in that building, businesses, I believe that's gonna, um, slow down the, the people passing through.
'Cause just to say, there was sidebar, but like, if the fire trucks were coming, sometimes they come that way, they're gonna have to go through a line-
Absolutely.
And come back around, so we'll, we'll follow up on that side.
Yes.
All right, counsel.
Got you. One more, uh, question, too. Um, it's, this is in regards to the, to the, to the, to the future expansion plan, uh, that Ms., uh, Ms. Ja- Ms. Jessica has for the site. Now, does this mean that we'll have some opportunities for more community engagement? Is that-
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes, sir. And we wanna make sure that, um, once she, providing that it's approved, once she applies for her, um, business license application, we'll get with the community development, well, economic development director, and we will make sure that we would nurture the business so that it would continue to grow.
Gotcha. And I understand this, you know, a school, but also a business, so just curious as to, like, how many people will we be able to employ?
So though, yeah, we have to be very mindful of questions as it relates to that for the business and stick to the application that they handle.
Yeah, and, and the reason I'm asking that is because, I mean, like, like, I'm not, you know, as, as we know, we have thirty-five, you know, hundred people in the city that can work, and only about twelve hundred people that are working, so I'm just trying to see exactly what we can do to help make sure that, help make sure that our workforce is qualified for you all.
Right. We, we can, there, there are options that the economic developer will provide to her. Um, we do have a school right next door. Um, I believe it's an adult school, and they, they do have a career facility, and so, um, I'll be working with the economic development director so that we can put together a plan for that, because we do wanna, we wanna do some homegrown.
But again, counsel, we wanna stick to the criteria of the, and I've just learned this, of the application, and anything else that you can reach out separately. All right, thank you. Next agenda item, so we will, um, have a hearing next week, and so be more than welcome to come back then. Next on the agenda, please?
Counsel to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding agreement between Clayton County Water Authority and the City of Jonesboro, Georgia regarding Tara Boulevard Stormwater Rehabilitation Project.
Um, counsel, if you can see all the information before, the city, um, the county, the, the water authority acquired the property, that's that huge sinkhole that we've been trying to get repaired, and so we're giving, going into this memorandum of understanding. Do you all have any questions? And so basically, they're just asking for, um, you can see the request that they're asking for, for them to access the stormwater rehabilitation. I think it's kinda straightforward, but we'll have to, we'll have to have this. Um, the attorney has, um, reviewed everything. Attorney Dryer?
Your, uh, Mayor, yeah, I looked through this, and I, I think it's good, and I don't see any problems for the city. They, they did take my feedback, and they now have a legal department they're good to work with. Julius Tolbert is their general counsel.
Um, counsel, do you have any other questions? 'Cause this does not require a hearing, and it can move to the consent agenda. Microphone. Again, we're not privy to that information. We're only privy to the request that they have asked of us. Thank you so much.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, you're, thank you, Mayor. I'm not privy to that, but you, you do find, um, in the package, thank you to the clerk for including this, the order to abate the public nuisance that's listed there, and, um, so when a court order, this has gotta be repaired, um, and all we're doing is, uh, we're not giving away any property or anything. We're just providing access to that spot. Clayton County Water Authority seems to have a plan, and we'll do all the work and, and spend all the money.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Dixon.
And to, uh, Mayor, I mean, to Councilman Lester's point, it is beautiful that it is no cost to the city. I'm really thankful for Clayton County, I'm really thankful for Clayton County Water Authority for, um, helping us with that lift. But I was reading the, me and, um, Attorney Dryer, we had a, a quick, quick, quick conversation just about just how the, the memorandum reads, I mean, or the MOU reads, and, um, and we spoke about those, those concerns in regards to section one and section three. You know, I know that it says that, you know, they're just going through eighty-four fifteen to get to eighty-four oh-five Tara Boulevard, but I also read that it's gonna turn in, they're gonna turn it into green space as well, as far as eighty-four fifteen and, and eighty-four oh-five. So, I was looking at section one, and Attorney Dryer, Councilman Dixon, you may be able to help me out with this when it comes to my language. But it says, as may be, in the section one, it says, as may be modified in the sole discretion of the authority. Um, it kinda seems like we're just, you know, completely giving away full of control. Sounds like we just don't have a seat at a table when it comes to eighty-four fifteen anymore.
We don't, because I spoke with them about that. Everything is dependent on, as you can imagine, once they get the engineers and get in. So if he gets in and there's something that has to be done, they can assure us green space. Again, we have no, we have the option as a city to take care of this entire project, which is costing close to millions, but Clayton County Water Authority stepped in, so we can table this, and you can work with Alfred Dixon and address justice however he so fit. After two attorneys already looked at it, but you can. All right, so you wanna make a motion to table?
Yes, I'll make a motion to table to address, uh, section one, section three, and, uh, to possibly add two new sections, future use enhancements, and community engagement commitment.
So we'll table it, and Attorney Dryer, if you would speak to, and just, why don't, why don't we have a meeting and let all those elected officials concerned as such, let them meet with them, that way we don't have to go back and forth, so maybe if you could arrange that and facilitate anybody else, any other council members that's concerned and wanna be a part of it, let them just meet totally outside of whatever they come up with.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Next on the agenda, please?
Counsel to consider approval of a fee waiver regarding Clayton County's application to use Lee Street Park for the Sip and Sound event on the following dates, August fourteenth and twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, as well as September the eleventh and twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
And counsel, just be advised that I'm sponsoring these 'cause in lieu of a city manager, so it's not typically what I would do, but I just wanted to say, state that for the record. We were approached by the county commissioner, chairwoman, and the county commissioner, Damont Davis. They typically have these at Lake Spivey, but they're undergoing construction. Um, I'm asking that the fees be waived. They are providing all security in collaboration with Chief and trash receptacles. I don't see that on here, but we spoke about trash receptacles on there as well, and we will have two to three public works. The event is from five-thirty to eight-thirty, and I don't think the actual event is from five-thirty to eight-thirty. Someone from the city is here. If you wanna come forth and ask any question. And they expect two hundred people. Oh, here it is. They'll handle all security with CCPD and supply cardboard trash bins. Hi.
Hi, how are you, Mayor, councilmembers? I'm Nicole Horn. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for Clayton County. And the event really starts the music at seven. For five-thirty, we start having everyone come in and kinda get settled. We might do some door prizes and things of that nature, and then the music actually starts at seven. So there'll be a DJ from five-thirty to seven, and then the bands will come, and then we'll clear out by eight-thirty. And we do monitor the sound, um, to make sure we're still within the noise ordinance, so if it gets a little loud, staff goes back to the farthest end of the park to make sure we're staying within, um, the sound recommendations.
Counsel, any questions?
If something gets tore up, who's gonna be responsible? In other words, like, somebody backs into one of the walls and knocks something down, or, or, God forbid, anything else that might damage the park in any way. I know that sometimes we've had a, um, what do we call it, a, a fee that is returned, uh, at the end of the concert or the, the next day or something along those lines.
Would you all be willing to do a memorandum of understanding, saying that you all would be liable for, 'cause this is gonna go into a memorandum, this is going to go into a memorandum of understanding. We want to get you all's approval, that you all would be liable for all damages.
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll check the park afterwards to make sure.
Okay, no problem. We can do that.
Councilman Dixon.
Question for you. Uh, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here. Um, so I, I was reading the application. I seen that it was, that y'all was considering having three food vendors?
Um, we typically have food trucks, yes, and it's typically three.
Um, and I'm thankful to, uh, to, uh, welcome, um, Sip and Sounds back to Jonesboro, but I was just curious as to if we could reserve one of those food trucks for one of our, um, Jonesboro businesses?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Well, we gotta be mindful about that, because we got several Jonesboro businesses, so then we have to determine which one we're gonna have.
So, I mean, whichever way you all wanna work that out, just let us know, and we'll make sure that they're-
So when you say free food, you all-
It's not free food, it's vended food. So the food truck is there, and you have to purchase the food from the food-
Yeah, but you all don't charge a vendor fee?
We don't.
Okay.
They're already under contract and met the guidelines from the county to be able to vend, and I think we use similarly what you all use, but there is no fee.
Okay, perfect. All right, counsel, can this move to consent agenda?
Yes, it does for me.
All right, there's no opposition. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Look forward to the partnership.
And Mayor, to the mayor, just before, too, I, I would just like to, just also, you know, I'm all for, you know, these type of events, you know, that, that enhance our quality of life here in Jonesboro. But I would just like for us to, I, I see that, you know, that, I, I would approve this event. I see that staff recommends approval for this event, um, which I'm thankful for, um, but I just want us all to be mindful, you know, keep that same energy when individuals from this elected body, um, try to do, um, initiatives that would benefit the community, that we, um, consider those same waivers as well.
Yeah, and I think we will if they come before us in less than, in an appropriate amount of time. This is almost ninety days out, and I think in the past, what you're alluding to is that submitting waivers for things and not prior planning, so as you can imagine, the counsel, we'll keep the same energy. Next on the agenda, please.
And one second, though, Mayor.
No, let's just move, let's move, we had a lot to do, but let's move to agenda, but I, I hear you, I hear your case. We're gonna take care of you. Next item.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel to consider approval and adoption of ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash zero-zero-four regarding FY twenty-five budget transfer. Transfer of five hundred and forty-five dollars from Counsel's Education and Training GL account to Counsel's Travel Account in order to cover travel expenses.
This was for Councilman Alfred Dixon, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is, Councilman Dixon received a scholarship. We just need to shift so that it covers everything, and it doesn't look like a deficit. Um, if you all are okay with that, all the information is in front of you. We can move it to the consent agenda. All right, we'll move that to the consent agenda. Next on the agenda, please?
Counsel to discuss one-seven-three Cloud Street, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six.
Counsel, um, it was brought to my attention, I don't know how I missed this, but this is the rental property, am I correct? This is the rental property, one-seven, yes.
Yes.
Um, so we have a property that the- So we have a property that the city owns on 173. We're currently renting it on a month-to-month lease for $950. I think it's a three-bedroom, two-bath. I spoke with the tenant just briefly. We are trying to find the last actual contract for this property, and we have not, we're going to check with our previous legal counsel. So I just wanted to bring that up because this particular property does need to go up under a 12-month lease. There's also some legal concerns in regard to city owning a property and renting it and making sure that there are no other vested interest in that since the rent is well below the market rate. And then we also need to hammer out some things about some repairs and things like that. So we'll be working with our previous legal team, current legal team, to try to get a contract so we can move off of year to year and just put some, I don't know if a deposit was paid. I don't know how this particular person was vetted. I think she's been there a while. She pays on time. I don't think she's ever been late, has she, Ms. Maria? So we just need to clean that up, so I wanted to bring that up. So if you all, anybody had any history or any information that they can share as we go through that process, please email me and copy Attorney Dreyer, and we hope to have this. If not, by next week, definitely by June. Any questions or comments, Counsel? Thank you.
Counsel to discuss Heroes Crosses for Memorial Day.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this doesn't have any supporting documents with it. It was just actually brought up in a community discussion about our plans for Memorial Day, the crosses that we, that we normally have posted on Main Street. That was a question. So I didn't have the plans to share with them for those crosses, so I wanted to address that here tonight. If we, if we had an update on, on what we plan to do with the crosses.
We don't have an update. We'll get back with you. We didn't get this information until late, and so we just have not had a chance to meet and convene, but we can move that to old business. I'm not sure if we'll have that information by next week, but we'll try to.
Counsel to discuss beautification at Baptiste Garden Circle.
All right, this is another one, Mayor and Counsel. So if I could. So this is again, we was at a community pop-up event at Baptiste Garden Circle last week. And the residents had spoke about, you know, just the beautification of it, the addition of a, of a matching bench or seating space to go across from the, from the other one. In the past, we've had beautification commission, we've had, you know, mulch and different planning and different things. Really, it just made the, the community feel like home, you know, when they pulled up in their driveways, it's something that was just really welcoming for them. So just trying to see, do, I'm just, if I can just get some clarity, or just, I don't have the budget in front of me. But do we, do we have a beautification line item under the code still?
I believe we do. I'll have to check and verify. Do you know the amount, Ms. Cameron?
I do not know that. However, I've worked with the county, the beautification program with the county. And so I'm not sure how, how the city does it, but we usually can get businesses to sponsor these types of items, and that way you don't have to touch budget money. If we can work, if you will allow us to work with the Economic Development Director, and we can work with our businesses, I'm sure we can get businesses to sponsor that.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to answer any concerns that you will have for the, about the beautification program.
Okay, so I guess just in regards to just the Baptiste Garden Circle, like I said, if we can check and see if we do have that in the budget still, as far as the beautification efforts budget line item. And because we would like to get some mulch out there, maybe some planters, just to beautify the area. Would love to get a matching bench out there.
We can also talk with the Clayton County Extension Office. That's an extension of the, of UGA. They would love to come out. We also have master gardeners in the city, and in Clayton County, they would love to come out and, and help. And those are partners that we can, individuals that we can partner with, and they can bring those resources as well.
Love it.
So we'll take care of it.
Love it, thank you.
Yes. And again, I want us to be mindful that we're equitable across the city. So we do our pop-up events, and that's how we were made aware. But we haven't gone to all our pop-up events throughout the city. And I know there are other neighborhoods that we're going to get to, and they're going to be like, oh, well, we want this as well. So I don't know if we want to do a neighborhood application process. I know there's some things that they wanted to grow. I know there's some things down by Crowder, they were asking for some things, as well as King Street, moving into there. So I just want us to figure out a way that we can beautify the city, but make it equitable across all neighborhoods. Because if we spent money on Baptiste, then, you know, then other neighborhoods may want certain things. I know the Grove wanted us to do something with their dog park.
And to your point, I totally agree with you on that. But to your point, that was the, I guess that's why the beautification commission worked so well, because we had members from the Grove, members from Baptiste Garden Circle, members from Topo Terra, you know, all a part of the beautification commission. And then, and then we had those ideas that come to the table, so that we knew how to utilize the budget across all sectors of the community. So just to your point.
All right, thank you so much. Next item.
Counsel to discuss the City of Jonesboro's newsletter.
Councilman Dixon, did you provide something for that?
Yes, he did.
It's in my, it's in the packet. I don't see it. Oh, it's one pager.
Page 37.
Yes, so newsletter, yes. So Mayor and Counsel, we're almost there. We're almost there.
Let's just hurry up and get there, please.
All right. All right, so I mean, I've had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Tran and other members of the community regarding the cost and time efficiency for the newsletter, in regards to the staff and just how we can make it work. And I'm really planning to move forward with the EDD process with United States Postal Service, and that's all for less than $700 per issue. And you all can correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm really trying to, you know, be mindful of, of staff. But also, you know, so, yeah, so as, what we would need staff to do, you know, truly is print the newsletters, make sure that there's no jamming in the, no jamming in the printer, make sure all the newsletter just comes out pretty smoothly. And, and really just hand, print the labels and just hand those over to the volunteers that we would, that we would solicit for the community, from the community. So we're definitely trying to, you know, be mindful of the staff. And we would also just need departments to just provide us a report or any highlights they would like for us to include in the newsletter. Did you have anything to add to that, Ms. Cameron?
We can, we can definitely provide information that will go into the newsletter. I mean, I think it would be a great way to get information out to the, to the citizens as far as initiatives that's going forth. For example, the beautification program and what we would like, you know, to provide to our businesses and how we want to take some initiative, get citizens to donate items, and then, you know, get our businesses to sponsor a project. So we can, we can add some information to that. Just give us a time when you want that information, and we'll do the write-up so that you can, it'd just be an easy slot in. We want to make it easy for you.
Awesome, awesome. And that really does make it easy for us as we work through it.
Councilman Dixon, I do have a question. What, what format are you using? Are you using constant contact? Or what format as, as far as the newsletter?
I can answer that. So we have, we literally manually print the labels based on the label. We don't do the constant contact. I was hoping we can move to that, but I think we're going to do it manually. So we'll actually manually print it and then manually label it, but we don't have to meter it. We take it to the post office and they meter.
Right.
Correct. So that's kind of how we've done it. We were, I was hoping we would change, but I think going into June, it'll be.
Got you.
So we have, Ms. Wetherington, where, where does our addresses come from? You just have every household labeled, don't you? Yes, kind of, yeah. So we just pull labels, not through constant contact yet.
Do we do, do we send anything out digitally? Do we have, how do we, how do we collect email addresses from our citizens?
We just been, we can talk about that.
Okay.
All right, I'm trying to get some clarification on the date. We want, this May 22nd date is the date, so I can send it out to staff.
Yeah, so, and like I said, not trying, not trying to butt off so much, you know, right?
No, 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 I just want to make sure because we're going to send this out tomorrow.
Yeah, so, yeah, we would love to, we would love to actually have this information in between the 15th and 20th. So I guess no later than the 20th.
Shelby, can you make sure we send the email out to the departments for that?
Okay.
With those dates, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just for clarity, I know that you all had some routes listed. So now this, this, every door direct mail that we had, it had three suggested routes that will cover the businesses and the residents. Now, I did see in this route where it may have left off maybe like a street. Are you all familiar with that at all?
No, and I think this would be better because like I said, in the past, we've had several pieces of mail going to one house. Like I've received like three, like if somebody, so I think the way that you're going will prevent that. We actually, it's one piece of mail for that particular household. So in that case, we'll get with Maria, I mean, Ms. Wetherington about those labels, but I think this looks a little bit, a lot more efficient.
Okay, got you.
Mayor, Councilwoman, Aja Miller. All right, so we have those dates. We'll push them out to our departments, counsel, and those dates would be applicable for counsel as well if they have anything they want to include.
Right.
Okay, perfect. So we'll include them on that email. Thank you, Councilman Dixon, for working on this, and we'll have a newsletter out in June, and we'll go from there.
And I appreciate y'all. It's a team effort for sure. You know, I definitely want to thank Councilwoman Aja Miller, Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem Tracy Messick, just for, you know, just the import, I mean, the insight and support throughout the whole mission. The rest of my council members, I look forward to hearing some great stories that y'all will submit from, from yourselves and your neighbors.
And we just also, let me know like once the format is in, so Ms. Bentley can see, because we don't print this on regular paper. We printed on that paper I was showing you that time, so we can, so we make sure we have enough paper in. All right, thank you, Councilman Dixon. Next item.
Counsel to discuss JYCG budget update.
All right, Counsel, this is just, it's in your packet to the left, and this is just in regards to the JYCG budget update. I know last week, I'm sorry, last month, we discussed the updates regarding the JYCG budget update. Oh, regarding the JYCG budget, I wanted to make sure that the budget reflected the grants and donations from our years leading up to, to now. So listed, you'll see the, the numbers and outlines, and I know that it, it may reflect on the, me and our city clerk, she was super helpful in trying, in explaining it to me. But I just, I see it on the, on the budget, but I don't see where it gets rolled over, and that was just my only concern. Because as we try to implement, you know, the projects that will be on the, on the agenda later on, you know, we're looking to lean on some of these grants and donations that are for programming for the Jonesboro U.C. government.
Councilman Dixon, can you give us dates, like the CCPS Foundation, was that received this year, this fiscal year?
I will give you dates. CCPS Foundation was 2023. That was for programming.
Yeah, I think that'll help because what happens from the, and I don't.
2024, I'm sorry, but that was for programming.
Yeah, so if you would put that in there, and then we can forward it to Ms. Munger. So I think what happens is revenue doesn't, I'm not the finance person, but I think revenue does not roll over. So you won't see in this year, uh, revenue that was sent in the previous year, am I correct? Correct. And so it's not a use it or lose it, but we got to figure out how to capture those. So if you don't use all that funding that year, I'm sure we still have it. I just got to see where it is. So if you would give us those years, I think that'll help us on that. When I was looking at that, I couldn't determine vaguely, I remember, like Hannah Hart was last year as well, wasn't it? Yeah. So if you would give us those dates. So what you will not see, though, is those amounts on the 2025. So if you got $3,500 last year and you didn't use $3,500, you're not going to see that in your revenue for this year. That's just not how they do reconciliation.
So I think that's just, that's where my concern is, and not really concern, but just my, my moment of clarity that I, that I'm looking for is I just want to know what exactly it is that the Jonesboro U.C. government has access to, so that we can.
So we can pull you the current budget and Ms. Bentley can pull you, can you pull that line item? Because what this doesn't, what is not a caption to is expenditures. So Shelby can get you, Ms. Bentley can get you both of those.
But I've seen, and we, y'all, the current budget was shared with us last month. It shared the, it reflected the expenditures, and it reflect, you know, it reflected what was left, right? Which is great, matches up for this year, but it doesn't show us where, you know, I think the first year in 2023, we approved it in May, but we had a swearing in the December, but Clayton County Public Schools donated $1,800 for the first year. But we only spent maybe $400.
Yeah, so again, that's what I was saying. We got to, I got to get with appropriate finance practices, but you will not see money that was given in a previous fiscal year in this year's budget year. So if, so we'll have to go back and look at all expenditures and see what was left at the end of '23 and '24, see where those funds are, and then can bring those forth. But I got, there's a way that you do it in municipal finance. Shelby's been to her classes. Am I saying it right? Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, so it's there, but it's not, so for example, if we made $500 from, for, from rent, from what? From rental, and we didn't spend it in 2014, 2024, you're not going to see it in 2025. It just goes to a general budget, and it goes somewhere. Because like we, we're holding money from like the quarterback committee, $50,000 from Habitat. You won't see it in the budget, but it's in our coffers there. So we just have to figure out a way to do that for you all if you're not using everything. Which is why a lot of cities say use it or lose it, but donation is a little different. So Shelby will get you that. If you would write the years for each of these, so we'll know where to discover from.
Well, all of this is actually last year except for the first one.
Okay, well, I mean, if you.
Actually, it's listed there, actually.
It says '23 and '24. I just don't know which one was '23 and which one was '24. So if you would clarify that and provide it.
Right there. So the first one says May 2023, but everything else is 2024.
Okay, so everything else. And again, we have to put this against the expenditures to see what was actually left. All right, we can work on that, I think. All right, thank you so much, Councilman Dixon. Next item.
Counsel to discuss Lee Street Park concession stand transformation.
Councilmen Dixon and myself had a few conversations about the transformation and utilization of the concession stand. I know mine sprouted initially just at the issue we had with water, and then it kind of transformed into how we can better utilize this space for the youth and making it better for the community. You have the information in front of you, an overview of the program, but more or less, it is, it would be designed to have a few members of the youth, five ages 14 through 18, and two supervisors to work the concession stand during, the hours are from 10 to 6, but we can adjust that based on conversations with counsel and information and input from our staff and directors. But basically, they will be selling things in the concession stand, and they will also be utilizing the time that they're there to have cleanliness in the park. I know we're having issues with the basketball court being clean and things like that. And so they will have a detailed schedule in which they will have certain times where they would do checks at the basketball park, checks at certain other areas of the park, just to pick up things so that it's not so heavy on public works. It will help out a little bit. And we don't have to worry about trying to close the basketball parks and things like that for people not maintaining them. I think it'll help. There will also be some events that we will try to do in the summertime to give things for the community to come to, whether it's coming, we're going to, you know, have a book reading, or we're going to have a talent show, or maybe we can organize some sort of basketball tournament or something like that. And so they would be there as well to facilitate signing up for a set event. But I think it's just, we always talk about Jonesboro being a place where you can work, play, and pray, and all of those good things. And I think that this affords the opportunity for students or youth to be molded and learn entrepreneurial skills and things like that, and also allow the community to have something to come to. I know we wanted to speak with Attorney Dreyer to make sure that we look at anything as far as make sure we're not liable for legalities as far as, just when, you know, hiring youth and things like that. Councilman Dixon brought up a good point about our supervisors. We have a lot of seniors in the community that need extra income, and so that's who we're kind of be looking for, for the supervisors. Of course, we're not excluding anyone, but I think that that was just to encompass the entire, from our youth to our more seasoned residents. It'll help with community outreach. Um, it'll help with community outreach, I think, and so this is just, this is a for, this is a rough model, we're open to conversations about it, we're open to, um, direction. I want to speak to Chief Kato, um, you know, Mr. Hurd, Ms. Karen, I want to speak to all of the directors and see how they feel about it and how we can make it as easy as possible, um, but these are their thoughts.
Tell me anything else. I did have a few questions. Um, I definitely think it's a good idea, my only concern was you all wanted the June first, and I just don't think we'll be able to get the departments together to have like the initial planning, and then because it involves financing, because I really feel as though it should be a cashless operation, um, and so we'll have to figure out how we can do that and set up like the inventory. So if we schedule a meeting for next week with the department heads or everyone, I think they'll be involved, and you all, but I don't see Ju- June first being able to be, because I don't want to set it up with a, with a cash till.
I'm not opposed, I think maybe June first, like to get the information out, because we have to have recipients, people to apply.
Yeah, no, no, I feel like we have the opening day, I guess, so we, I feel like, so we have to figure out the liability. If we're selling stuff, I'm assuming nothing is cooked, because if everything's cooked, then we have, anything cooked, then we have to go through this whole safe serve process. So it has to be enclosed snacks, um, I mean, there's a whole safe serve thing that we'll have to go through, that's why I said, so if we sit down, because again, we didn't get this till late, we could probably have a meeting early next week with key people that I feel that can do that, and then I got to figure out with the Department of Labor, fourteen and fifteen require work permits and stipulations, and I need to figure out how we're going to pay this, is this paid on an hourly, is this paid on a stipend? Because it's paid on an hourly, then we got to set up A D P, so there's just some logistical things that we got to get in place. Um, but I don't think, I can just tell you from administrative end, we won't be able to have those things in June first. I'm just kind of running through a list, and I'm thinking I'm missing some things too, but definitely payroll, A D P, um, whether, what you all are planning on serving, making it cashless for safety purposes. You know, like I wouldn't want any kids there with cash, and if we do have cash, then we have to have a system for when we close at six o'clock to close out the till to, to bring over here, and then we're closed at six because they couldn't just take the cash home, they would have to safety lockbox it, so. I think it's definitely plausible, had, some of this, and I'm definitely not turning it down, I'm just thinking, I always think from a liability purposes. Is this something maybe we could kick off on a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and try some weekends through June, and then maybe a full implementation, because I can tell you like the parks are up and running on the weekend. That was just a thought for small scale, since we're limited to time, and even with that, then we could probably consider a cash, I mean, I could probably avail staff for those moments, especially when we're dealing with finances, but again, I'm just thinking off the top of my head. Um, that was just one initial thought when I received this, um, Saturday. But we can schedule a time, Shelby, will you put a note for us to schedule a time for next week, early next week? Um, and I'll get with her prior to then and try to do some homework as far as Department of Labor. Will you all plan on cooking any food?
So, um, don't plan on cooking any food at all, um, but we do plan to, we don't plan on cooking any food at all.
Which I plan to. So you're talking about like snacks, water, drinks?
Yeah, that's all we plan to serve.
So, yeah, so no cooking, so that takes, does that take safe serve out?
Um, well, the food trucks, my, my concern about permitting the food trucks, they would have to, we would have to have that documentation from, um, you know, the state and things like that, so.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, no. Give I, so that's, if we were to do set events, it would be food trucks that we've utilized before.
Yes.
Just to, if, if we have a talent show or flag football or something like that.
Okay.
And that will go through the same process that they typically go through. I think the only thing that we would maybe, um, request is if those vendor fees could go toward this line item to ensure that we have everything for the stipend, and make sure that J Y C G budget isn't completely depleted at the end of.
Okay.
And that will, just to speak on the budget, you know, we are definitely working towards, you know, applying for more donations, um, more grants, you know, just still actively doing that so that we can cover this program and not tap into what's already, um, made available by mayor and council for the youth.
Okay, so the initial, um, so the, so we, yeah, so we need to break down, youth pay five, youth at sixteen hundred dollars, how many hours? Because in that case, it probably wouldn't be paid to the end of the summer, so those are things. Could you please, um, Attorney Dryer, look at, um, Department of Labor, fourteen through eighteen-year-olds, and see how this can be paid, like, so the sixteen hundred dollars, does that require like a number, is that a set number of hours?
Sir, I'll go ahead.
It's, it's fine, so we have, we had it set for twenty hours per week before our shifts. We did talk about a stipend for the youth, and then just the supervisors being the ones who actually get paid at a, and I don't think that particular detail is in here, but the supervisors that get paid at a weekly or bi-weekly high of a ratio, and the students get it at the end.
Okay, and so then we'll have to determine if those that are paid by hourly, if we have to pay all the other things. Like for stipend, I know it's a little different, but like if they get paid by hour, then we have to pay, Maria, what's all those things?
You have to pay all the taxes.
You have to pay all the taxes.
I mean, withdrawals, um, depending on how many hours, and we can.
No, those other little things, yeah, like the, all them different little line items, that's what all that you're talking about?
Like federal.
Yeah, so give us like a hourly wage that you think for the supervisor, so we can convert with the, because even if you pay on like twenty dollars, it, it costs us more than twenty dollars.
Got you, and I, and I would just say, I mean, and I'm not opposed to the stipend at all, whatever, you know, for, for either one of them, actually. Um, I think, um, but, you know, um, you know, just as in, um, to mayor, I'm sorry, to Councilwoman Miller's concern, or a point about the advisors, you know, being a little bit older at least, um, you know, there are some still in our community that, that need some assistance, you know, with power bills and just different things like that, and they have a wealth of knowledge and would love to, I think it would only help build that generational gap, if I could just say. Um, but I would love for the kids to get paid weekly. I would love for that, I mean, just to continue to keep them motivated, keep them involved, keep them engaged. Um, even if it is taxed, you know, that'd just be another educational component to, um, you know, to teach them as they're growing through.
But we can, once we have the meeting all together and we can really see how much that eats up the budget and things like that, you know, we'll be able to better make a decision.
So you all are willing to, so this, okay, this eleven thousand dollars, I know that, are we initially taking that from the budget? Because you all have to buy it, startup and everything, so I believe there is going to be some city needed funding from this, because we can't project something without existing funding for it currently in place.
And I think that's why he wanted to know about the J Y C G budget, I think he had like around eight thousand in the one we approved this year, and if the nine thousand had much from the previous one, and I know we both, I know, I mentioned giving some of the initiative funds that we have to do with the inventory, the first set of inventory, and after that, we believe it'll start paying for itself as far as just the restocking of the water and things like that. Also reaching out to our community members to see if, just to send a letter and see if program, anybody would donate water and get ready for our startup and things like that. Um, but I think we thought between the, the eight thousand and the nine thousand that we should, if all of this is able to be accounted for in a timely fashion, that we should be able to have something to lean on and not have to lean on the city, if we could avoid it.
Yeah, my biggest fear is with the finances, with us not having a finance director to go back in and, and find that. Counsel, any questions on your end, Councilman Powell?
Yeah, our plan is for the youth council to take the money out of their budget to pay these people, correct?
The plan.
That's the plan, but.
Whatever is generated.
Well, we got to have it down where that will be it and not cost the city money.
Okay.
Blindfolded again, we do that too often.
And I think that's where the additional funding will come in, that's the only blind, like, um, unexpected thing, if this doesn't line up. But if it does, then the money should be there in addition to whatever the store generates.
And what about profits from the selling?
It goes back to.
We hope for it to go back to the youth programming.
To buy more inventory and hopefully have a profit.
Yes, sir.
Right, for whatever, yeah, that the new, the new class might need.
But again, I wanted to make sure we're clear, previous funding may not roll over as simply as you all are, are thinking. So, but I, I can ask some questions around that.
Got you, and quick question, um, Councilman Powell, you, you used to, um, you have experience with convenience stores, correct? Okay.
So do we lean on your expertise?
I'm retired right now.
He's retired. Councilman Powell don't work for nobody. But again, counsel, if, I do feel, if you all wanted to do a pop-up weekend in June, without, you know, as we work through this and maybe have volunteers, just to see, I feel like that's something that could definitely be pulled off of the first week of June, you could advertise it, because I'm, just with staff, you all, I, I want to make sure we do this right, because when you talk about children, so. We're going to work as much as we can, but we could easily do a pop-up shop and do a till, and I could get Ms. Munger to close out the money.
To just, as we did for Sundown Cinema.
It's kind of like what we did for Sundown Cinema, so if there's a weekend that we want to do that and staff it, I will volunteer a couple of hours, and I could consider some staff working as well as a pop-up, um, until we can get all these logistics, um, wore out, but that's a thought that.
And I, and I, I would, I would love that too, um, you know, even, you know, just soft opening up and leading up maybe a grand opening on Juneteenth Day. You know, um, I think that would be cool.
So looking at just the weekend, because again, when you have money, that's going to be with the city, you typically have to have staff um, there. Alright, so Shelby will schedule a meeting next week, um, with you all and with key staff. Ms., Attorney Dryer has some things that he's going to be working on. Um, I would ask though, if there are these events that you all mentioned, that we have those now? Because we typically, we have been really good at pushing out a city event calendar as soon as possible. So if you, if you all have some ideas and some dates, let's go ahead and have those for the meeting next week, and so we can see what we can withstand and what not withstand. Alright, thank you all, any other things, counsel, that y'all can think of, staff that we might need to add?
Madam Mayor, and counsel, I, I think that this would be a wonderful item for our newsletter.
Come on down.
Yeah, once we have everything ironed out. Um, Chief Kato is out ill for a couple of days, so I'm going to let, allow him to rest, but when he comes back on Thursday, I will definitely reach out. Counsel, I would just ask that you all let us talk this through collectively as a team, so people aren't getting bits and pieces and we can come together. So, um, I know you all reached out to separate ones, but let us pull together as a team, and we'll make something happen. Alright, thank you all so much, at this time, we have old business.
Counsel to discuss the rules of public comment.
Yes. We got a K, I'm sorry, sanitation policies.
Yep.
K, thank you.
Discussion of sanitation policies.
If you would like to.
I think the only thing with that, um, is, and it was kind of alluded to by, um, Ms. Ewan at the, 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 the top of the, the meeting, is that we would have appreciated if maybe that's whatever was printed out, I did get it on my dumpster, but, um, if we just could have got an email about it, just so that we're not taking, we're not caught off guard when residents come to talk to us about it. Um, and then also so that maybe we can have any type of conversation about proactive ways to kind of, to, to help the citizens, so we could answer the question about the back door, or anything else that might be able to help the seniors or our, our people with unique abilities in the city that might have issues with the trash, um, and so that we can present a united front when we're asked about it. And that's any communication, just so that we're all on the same page.
And I don't have a problem with that, but typically, yeah, we'll, we'll do better at that, because typically in the past, we have not put out all our communication to council, especially if it abides by policy. Um, I approved this, went back and forth with, um, council, I mean, uh, Mr. Marcus, Mr. Hurd, um, and I have to go do some research. It was my understanding that all of this followed existing policy and no policy was changed, or this is not new policy, if I'm correct, but I will stand corrected and go back and review, but we compared this to current policy, so, um, alright, point well taken. Old business?
Counsel to discuss the rules of public comment.
Mayor, I can start if you want, or obviously let counsel or yourself start.
You can, you can take us.
Pardon me?
You can.
Yeah, this was just a directive we were given, um, there was, at our last meeting, there was a question about whether speakers should put their full address on public comment. So, you know, we just did some basic research on Georgia law, um, obviously our charter and ordinances. There is no Georgia law requiring us to do it either way. There is no, nothing in our charter requiring us to do public comments either way. There, you'll note that there's, um, when there's a zoning meeting, that in our charter does require, um, speaker's name and address, okay? But other than that, there's no requirements, it is completely at the discretion of, of you. Um, so on a procedural standpoint, um, we stayed away from the, the policy, uh, which is your decision on, on addresses, but we did draft the public comment rules, um, which would want to be, we'd want to enact with a resolution. The resolution would just be, you know, a couple paragraphs enacting the actual public comment rule page that you have in front of you. If that makes sense.
Counsel, do y'all see the page on page thirty-nine, I think that's what you're referencing, that's what we have for our public comment rules?
Right, yes.
Any questions on that, and we can, is it resolu?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, thank you all, thank you all for just providing some context for us in regards to the public comment rules. Um, and I guess just to my colleague's point last week, I know that some suggestions were made in regards to not wanting to know their address, and understanding that we have more than just residents come up here to the council meetings, but we also have businesses, business owners that come to the council meetings, so they may not necessarily be a resident anyway. But it was, a suggestion was made to have a checkbox stating if they are a resident or a business owner or not.
Within the city limits.
Huh?
Within the city limits.
Within the, yeah, within the city limits of Jonesboro.
Is that, would that be a requirement, would that be optional?
If they leave it blank, then we would assume that they are not.
So then that means it's a requirement.
How did, is that a requirement, if, if, if we put not required to answer?
It, it, it wouldn't be a requirement, um, unless we pass a resident, council passes a resolution making it a requirement. Um, council could pass a resolution requiring a, or putting a box that says resident or not, and well, we couldn't assume they're not though, we could assume that, um, they may not have, they might declined, or we could put a, a box, um, that says resident, and then parentheses, uh, optional, I mean, you, there's.
I think I want to get down to, if someone lives in the city and wants to share their information, then the, the line, line, line is there for them to write it. If they choose not to, then they choose not to, so I don't think we need a box. I think by virtue of what they come up here and discuss, so if somebody can come up here and say, I'm concerned about the trees overhanging on Massengale Street or something, that concern is going to be addressed whether that person lives in the city of Jonesboro or just drove down the street and saw it and decided to come here. So I, I want us to make sure that we create a resolution that really gets to what we, the information that we want, um, and not require people, it may be a very sensitive subject, and they may not want to disclose that they live in the city. But, so tell me, do you want to require a address, and if so, why?
So that's why I want to remove address from our vocabulary, like, it's not address, right? Not, you know, eighty fifty Terry Boulevard, boom, 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 not just necessarily.
Just whether they live in the city or not.
Just if they are a city resident.
A lot of them won't know.
Or a business in the city, I mean, uh, that could be an educational point, you know, when we posting the rules, like, hey, these are the city limits. I don't, you know, just trying to understand, I mean, tonight we have public comment. I don't remember ask, hearing us ask for, you know, uh, address, of course, we know Ms. Pat is around the corner.
Yeah, we have it, again, so if someone comes up, I guess I just need to know at what point, as the person that oversees the meeting, if they refuse or do not, I tell them to sit down, we can't hear your comment, because you ain't let us know whether you live in the city or not. Because I guess, what I'm saying, Councilman Dixon, every person's concern that comes to this microphone, if it's under our purview, is going to be handled, whether you leave in and outside of the city. If you recall, last time someone came up and, um, discussed something that was totally out of our, you know, purview, and so I suggest, told her, I said, well, that would be a county, county issue, thank you so much. But it doesn't matter where that person lives, in and outside of the city of Jonesboro, if they have a concern within the city of Jonesboro, it's going to be her. If they have a concern within the city of Jonesboro, it's gonna be heard. And so I don't want people to think that you get something different because you live in the city, because I know some people say, well, it doesn't matter, you know, that, you know, such and such shouldn't matter. They should have to live in the city. No, like that example I gave you about branches. They drive those streets every day. And if those branches or potholes, other things, they come in, I don't expect just the residents to identify potholes.
No, I understand.
Anybody with the potholes. So I just wanted, if you can just kind of tell me
So we, we don't.
The need to know whether they live in the city of Jonesboro or not.
No, so like I said, just going back, our practices has always been, you know, and I know that last week we spoke about there are some cities moving away from that. I would love to just kind of hear, you know, uh, you know, just have a list of those cities, just so I can kind of do my own due diligence, right? But, um, we want everybody to speak. When they come to this meeting, when they take time to drive to this meeting at six o'clock through the traffic, while they're hungry and starving to speak on anything, we want them to be able to speak. That's not the question, right? Our practices has always been asking for their address. So we don't want to ask for their address anymore. We want to know if they are a city resident or if they have a business in the city of Jonesboro.
Okay, so we can, we can change that and just where it says address, put city resident, they can check that box and business. So I don't think we need a resolution for that. We just simply change, as administrative, we just simply change this public comment sheet. Because if it's not gonna be a requirement and I'm not gonna sit you down if you don't answer that, then that's just administratively and we can change this and take off address and where it says address. Put, I just happen, I'm gonna probably keep address, cause like I said, we like the same card. But maybe have something else that says business, city business and city resident. And I don't feel like that has to go in a resolution.
It, it doesn't have to go in a resolution. I just, I just want, you know, when we, when we start getting into this, i- if it's gonna be enforceable, um, I've done great in-depth research on rules of procedure and other ways. It, it's, it's fine. If, if you all are fine with it, um, then there doesn't need, need to be anything. We, you know, we would, um.
Adopt the rules that's listed?
We just suggest, yeah, post, posting it out front and keeping it consistent and on the website. But no, there doesn't have to be a resolution if council doesn't want a resolution.
Who, who creates this, staff?
Yeah.
Who, who creates this?
That was here prior to me.
Prior to you.
So clerk, if you would redo this as is and just add two columns right after topic of discussion. One is, um, business within the city of Jonesboro and the other one is resident within the city of Jonesboro. So we'll get that and we'll, we'll try, we can have that by Monday. Let's try it out Monday. Are y'all okay with that? Okay. Are you all, do we have to adopt these rules or anything?
No.
Because it's not, okay. Do y'all, everybody understand why we're not doing that? Okay.
You say, say it one more time, as far as because we wanted to just make the changes on the, on the rules.
Wouldn't, I was asking, do you all want to? Because of the explanation that he provided, as far as not a need for resolution, are you all okay with us moving forward with the rules that have been provided before us, which I can't find right now? And Mrs. Drewitt will modify our city of Jonesboro public comment sign-in sheet.
Got you.
All right, thank you, counsel. At this council, I didn't have any, let me just make sure. We didn't have any executive session. I didn't have any, I personally didn't have any business, well, not personally, as a mayor, didn't have any business to discuss an executive session. Are there any other businesses that you all like discussing executive session? Did you?
I got clarity.
You got clarity? Okay, cool. So, um, counsel, this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All in favor. Thank you, counsel, and now adjourn.
Thank you.